Oopsie, I just spilled it on my table.
Madam Chair, just for point of, are we killing it for?
I don't know. It's going to be a board decision. Because it'll be just a carryover to Monday night.
Yep, and potentially Wednesday.
And potentially Wednesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday I'll be at the hospital, probably.
I think that, you know, just for, just for, I know that...
Okay, yeah, that's fine. If people have, you know, I'm not going anywhere tonight, but I'm, I probably could...
After long days at the function, all of the, can I see it this way, can I see it that way, can I see it this way, can I see it that way stuff is less productive after eight hours.
Okay. I'm all for saving decisions for Monday, but let's just see where we go here, right? And we could, so we made some changes, we're making some changes to the schedule, wherever it is. Amy, you suggested we talk to, we have Jason from BOA, BOE come on up. And then we'll talk to the outside agency, so you guys don't have to sit here all day, all night. And then you heard if we want to stop at four or not, that's the suggestion. Maybe we could see where we are.
No worries.
Right? Because I'm not sold that I have to finish today, but...
I'm running out of gas.
I'd like to just not, oh, sorry. I lost that talking. Okay, hey, Jason.
Hi. So I just have two capital projects to present for the Board of Ed. The first is a modular classroom replacement. The second is security improvements, which we do every other year. Let me just go to the next slide. The capital project for the modulators was actually part of the previous fiscal year's budget. We originally asked for a $350,000 appropriation. However, there were some unforeseen challenges when we actually brought the engineers on site, and the quote was considerably higher than our original estimate. So we are asking for an additional $500,000 to complete that replacement. The second piece is, as I say, a biennial security improvement amount of 250,000 that we've been doing for a few years now. This year would be done, would be used to replace security cameras. We have a security camera fleet that goes back to about 2008. So a number of them are failing, a number of them do not have the kind of resolution that we have when we purchase the new ones. And with that, I'll take questions.
So could you go over just a little the Terrafill? I just made a note that last year it said 350K. I guess we did cash for in '23?
I believe it was bonded. Oh, it was cash? Okay.
I'm trying to find what page that this is on.
215.
250 or 15?
15.
No, I see that. I meant the description.
Oh, the description?
Yeah.
Well, she's looking for that. So I thought we had gotten rid of all our modulators.
All but Terrafills.
So we have a space issue at Terrafill, even though we're still, I thought we were putting new students up in Terrafill. So I'm confused. I thought if you have modular, that means you ran out of inside space in the building, right?
Correct.
But yet, I thought Terrafill was the least populated school, and that's why we were districting folks up there that were moving in.
At the current levels, the space requirements are using the full modulators. The enrollments are still going up, and now with the condition that they're in, we still need the two classrooms.
Gotcha. Okay.
And you have the, but you do have the administrative modules behind the high school.
Correct.
Are those ever going to be dispersed, that those people can be dispersed someplace?
There has been a lot of discussion about that, but the administrative office need is still there. The hope was that as enrollment started to decline, we could start moving them out of there, and then the numbers went the other way on us. So I haven't heard those conversations change.
And the security, none of this has to do any, this is completely...
Outside of the vestibule improvements that have made across to all the schools.
Correct.
Terrafill was the last one to get that improvement.
Yes.
231, okay.
232, actually.
I have 231. 250, yeah, where, 2, okay. Okay, so it's a, you're asking for 500,000 to be bonded for the, to replace the modules after we spent the 350 last year?
It hasn't been spent. This would be an $850,000 project.
Okay. So did we, not, just don't remember talking about it last year, so did we think it was going to be 350 last year, and that was it, and now we think it's, now it's 800,000?
Correct.
Okay. And what is the, like, you know, I don't, I don't get to Terrafill anymore. What is the condition like? Are they, you know, I guess if it's something we're going to have to do?
Yeah, the condition is probably the worst condition we have right now. Originally built in 1984 as temporary. See, we've had issues with sections of roof needing patching, and it's just very thin materials.
Is this down in the back where the kindergarten classrooms are?
No, this is, well, it is in the back, but it's not that kindergarten room. It's the music classrooms off of the gym. So if you go into that circular room, then behind it.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you.
So is this another, there's an Amy question for later. If we're going to bond another 500 for schools, right, we've bonded, you know, is that another place we might want to use cash, ARPA, to reduce the, I don't know the impact in the bottom line that stuff will do later. We'll have you go through that, but that's another thing we could potentially to use it for, and not bond for it, since we initially thought we were going to pay cash, right?
I don't know if we want to go there, but I'm just looking at sort of some of the numbers from '24, '25, and as we're trying to maybe sort of think about that year while thinking about this year. There's just a lot of heavy projects there, and I'm just kind of curious, are all of those projects necessary projects, or are they potential projects that could perhaps be delayed a year, just looking out to '24, '25?
In my experience in doing these, we do tend to wind up pushing back on as much as we can as we get there. We are, if I remember this correctly, one of the projects in that year is a roof project. That's...
Henry James.
Yeah. That's foreseeable to be pushed back, just in that there's not major issues with it right now, but it is on the type of fixed schedule that we try to maintain the roofs.
And both of those roof, Two in Hills and Henry James, they say there'll be a mix of bonding grants. Do you have a percentage? Is that the bonded amount that we have listed, and the grant would just be on top of that that's not in this? Is that how that works, or is that...
No, the...
That's the total, okay. So do you have a percentage of what part is grant?
I think we estimate around 30%.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I guess that was easy. Yeah, two items.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have with us the, who wants to go first, the ambulance or the fire company?
Who's going to be shorter?
Who's going to be...
Who's going to be shorter?
What, you want the shorter first or last?
Shorter first.
Okay. Chief, Gary, come on up.
I wasn't necessarily prepared for a presentation, but...
Oh, oh, it's, yeah, I might, I'm sorry. I mean, we could just talk about it internally too, but if you want to just give an overview, I think that would be a good thing to do. We're talking about the...
Where is this one?
The ask of the fire company.
Where is it in the budget book?
It's, I don't...
Page 16, Sean.
Huh?
Page 16, he said. Thank you.
Page 16?
Just, yeah, you could just remind us, give us, because people on this board didn't hear the presentation that was done at the Finance Subcommittee, so you might want to, page 16, just give us an overview.
Okay, sure. And Jim Ball is Fire Chief, and also the District Fire Administrator. And I did send some written testimony in for this meeting as well, that the Board should have received. Basically, what this comes back down to is that when the ARPA money was promoted as coming into the municipalities, one of the things that we had realized at that time was that the Fire District was not part of that distribution of funds. And I remember Gary Wilcox, our President at that time, came to one of the pre-meetings or one of the meetings about ARPA to make that statement, and realized that there certainly is an opportunity for infrastructure improvements within the community that may not, you know, that may not involve the Board of, excuse me, the Board's budget, or the Town of Simsbury's budget, but could in fact impact the Fire District's budget. And one of those, or two of those projects are the fact that we have generators that are original to the buildings that exist today at Bushy Hill and Terrafill, and those generators are up for replacement. They're approaching 40 years old, and they basically are at the end of their life term. So we had put together a proposal that we were asked to do to support the expenditure of 120, almost 125,000, just shy of that, to replace both of those generators for Bushy Hill and for Terrafill, using the ARPA money, which would then basically be a cost avoidance for the taxpayers who pay the Fire District tax. So, you know, since this money's coming from the federal government versus money coming from, if you will, the town's tax base. So we're hopeful that the town will see that benefit, because it does, you know, directly benefit the taxpayers. We have to do this one way or the other.
Okay.
So, you know, if the money is not appropriated from the ARPA funds, then we would have to include it in the budget for the fire tax.
Question, so we bought a bunch of generators through a federal grant in the past. These are not eligible for those, or we haven't looked at that, or?
It wasn't through a federal grant, it was through Source Wealth, federal procurement process.
Okay.
So we had a good price, but there was no, there was no money.
So we could potentially utilize it as a good price, but...
And we do use Source Wealth.
This is the good price?
Yep.
Okay.
Do those all our tricks.
Just making sure.
And did we hear about the Fire District was reducing their mill rate for the '23, '24 fiscal year?
The intention on the, on the mill rate right now is to go from a 1.22 to a 1. We do recognize, obviously, you know, revaluation pays a part of that, you know, there will be, you know, an increase in our operating budget, however, because we have some sizable fire apparatus replacements coming up. And with the, with the cost of those apparatus, unfortunately, you know, we are going to have to, you know, have the money. And as you know, the Fire District works on a no debt basis. We have everything paid for, so we carry no, no debt. We have no debt service, which is a huge, huge savings to the taxpayers.
But that does offset kind of, if we, you're helping us out if you're, you're helping us all out if you're lowering your mill rate.
Of course.
So...
And as much as the town will be lowering their mill rate as well.
Right.
Because of everybody else.
That's true. Forgot about that.
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be very happy to answer what I can.
No, I just, my only ones were the necessary now. You already answered that, so they are.
Okay. I'm just impressed how much life we get out of all of our assets in town. That's the theme today.
Well, I think we have a very good program. I know, I know the town does as well in terms of maintenance. You know, we really stay up on it to make sure that they're, you know, exercised appropriately, but they're also maintain, you know, different components that have, you know, shorter lifespans are changed regularly. So we're in the 100% business. So we have to be, you know, constantly prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you guys want to just give a little preview, or?
We'll do a very quick summary.
Yeah, great.
So we had Jim go first, so that's how long everybody gets.
Chris Kelly, I'm Vice Chair of the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. We're really just here because we know that today we're going to be talking about a grant application that we had submitted. It was for $150,000 for the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association. We actually submitted this after having some conversations early on with the town about some ongoing funding circumstances that we're running into. So really, approximately five years ago, for those of you who are on the Board, may remember that the Ambulance Association came to the town and said, like, most ambulance associations, we're running into a continuing trend of our expenses exceeding our revenue. This is particularly true in Simsbury, a dynamic not unlike the Police Department, as we have an aging population in particular that puts a significant amount of demand on the call volumes for the Ambulance Association. As I'm sure you've heard before, reimbursements, particularly from Medicaid, don't even come close to matching that. So for a number of years, we've been doing what we can to manage that as aggressively as possible, but the trend does look like it's going to continue. When we had some early discussions with the town about what might be some best approaches working together this year, the recommendation was to look at a grant, and subsequently, that's why we submitted a grant for 150,000. A big part of that grant is that we are committed to trying to continue to fund the second vehicle, which we started approximately the middle of last year. It's not critical that we have a second vehicle, but it's very value-added. It enables us to be able to have backup and be able to meet our metrics better than if we didn't have it. What we in particular like about it is it creates a really good bridge to have resources that as the town continues to grow, there'll be a threshold where we'll really be required to have that vehicle. But right now, the revenue that vehicle generates doesn't really cover the cost of it, and hence the reason for the application, 150,000. And it's a very nice solution for this year, which enables all of us to step back and then have some ongoing conversations about the best way for the SVA, along with, you know, the town, to work towards any type of future funding.
With that, 150, next year you'd be able to show us some real data with numbers and how that would be...
Yeah, we'll, we'll show you any data, you know, that you're looking for. We did present some data this year. We have some additional data that we generated based on conversations that we were having with Wendy. And I think one of the things that we had talked about is Karen does at every meeting of the Public Building, not Public Building, Public Safety Subcommittee, do an update on how we're doing against metrics. But if we do enter into any conversations about an ongoing relationship of funding, we certainly would, you know, mutually agree to any, you know, data that we can provide you. So, and we can provide you any data this year as well, so.
So there's one step further with that. I think we're going to have to talk about, and by the way, I am supportive of this request, and we've been talking for, what, four years on this now, five years, in various ways, is, is we have the obligation as the municipality of providing ambulance service, right? We have transferred in prior years, before any of us that are sitting in this room, the PSA, so the obligation to provide that service to Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance. But the financials and the funding models and the reimbursement models and all the challenges that are articulated in here and through our dozens, if not hundreds of hours of discussion at this point, show that we need to continue to look at, how do we fulfill our community obligation of this important facet of public safety? We have to have an ambulance that responds. And let me be clear, SVA is, is in a position to respond as it stands today, and this grant will continue to allow for both, both vehicles to respond next year. But we have to look at the reality of the financial situation, right? And, and with the pretty much lack of volunteers, very few volunteers at this point, the funding model is not sustainable unless something changes. And I don't believe, from what I've seen, those changes are necessarily internal to SVA. It's the reimbursement rates, it's how the service works. And the fact that the town has grown as well, and our needs have changed substantially since we transferred the two PSAs. What I'm leading to in this long-winded monologue, and I promise I'll get there, is when we contribute this much money to an organization, there's potentially a FOIA obligation that kicks in. So we have to talk to the town attorney and how the memorandum of understanding would work, whether we have to or need to point boards of, members of the Boards of Directors officially, unofficially. We have to talk about all of that in conjunction with this, because there's, there's probably, if not a legal, but a community obligation for increased transparency as a result of this, this much in tax dollars moving to an outside organization. I think we've got to, we've got to jump through that, and I know my friends at SVA are, have been and are continuing to be willing to have that conversation with us, because there's nothing to hide. We've seen all the numbers. We've had all the discussions. There's, there's nothing to hide here. No, and by no means am I implying that, right? But the public, the public obligations that we share by noticing this meeting, having minutes, et cetera, potentially transfer to an organization outside that we, we fund at this level. So we're going to have to figure that out, I believe, with a memorandum of understanding, from what the town manager has, has advised me and the first select woman in prior conversations. So, long-winded over, other than, this is the 777, so when we were back in October and we got the update on either the fly car or the second ambulance responding, based on a lot of public output that we've gotten, and a commitment from this organization, this keeps that ambulance and/or fly car on the road for the next fiscal year, is the short version of what we're talking about here. Because the reality and the conversations we've had is if we don't fund this, then that second ambulance will not be able to deploy for the next fiscal year, is, is the decision before us.
Safe, but physically responsible, you would have to do that, because if, we don't want the tumbling blocks of having the whole association having to share, so.
Yeah, said another way. I mean, it's not sustainable, and the organization would have to look for funding sources and/or service cuts, which would be the second ambulance, right?
Yeah, the first ambulance to fund is the second one.
I was just going to add to what the Public Safety Chair said. We had met with SVA earlier this year, and when we talked about this, Maria, you know, expressed all the kind of standards and structure that would have to go along with this. So, you know, she had, she really set the, the level of needs on our side, which would result in this MOU before we do this. And then the other piece that I mentioned to Chris today, so I know at one point we talked about this may could be a potential for multi-year. I'd like to look at this as a standalone year, that the 150 is just this year's ask, and that we revisit it in whole next year, because things may have changed. You may be getting your Medicaid. Who knows if the state will pass and fund your Medicaid at a higher level? You know, so just to...
It's not likely.
No, I know. But we know it's out there. So just like, it's a one-off this year, and then next year it's a new ask to see where we are and what we need.
And we agree with that as a strategy. We thought that's a good strategy overall, right?
The other question, so is it still, just for Amy, it's still done as a grant as opposed to like a one-year CNR project? Is there any difference in doing it that way?
No.
Okay, either, okay. And then, since you're here and you're talking about that, you have another ask?
Yes.
So do you want to talk about that?
The radios, Karen.
Two?
Oh, sure.
Because you're asking for other funding, so...
Yeah, we did, yeah. So this was a discussion that came up with the radios, and probably was, I should have brought this up sooner when we were going through the radio process, which is my oversight. But the equipment and everything that was done when we, when the town made the changes to upgrade all the radio system, we had to go along with all of it, because our radios would don't want to work with the system that the town had. So this was something that was required for SVA to have in order to keep communicating with the new system that town had in place. That being said, we felt we discussed about this, that maybe the equipment and the upgrades to the radio system itself physically, which actually still belongs to the town, if we went somewhere else, we wouldn't take it with us, we wouldn't, the portables would all come back to town, then maybe that expense would be forgiven as something that is in need for the town's public safety program to be taken and be upgraded.
Okay. There's an Amy question, I guess. If we were to forgive, so it's a $78,000, right? You guys have been paying us, or you haven't started paying us yet?
We haven't yet, no.
Okay. So how would we, how would that happen? We just...
So that money would be transferred into the capital project, which is so inconceivable.
Okay, okay.
I'm supportive of that.
Amy and Tom, is it correct, I'm sorry, is it correct, there was precedent for this? I think the last time we did the radio, a long time ago?
I actually did find a lot of them leave, actually.
There was an email, there was an email somewhere.
Remember, we had a...
Okay, sorry.
Again, not, not exactly the same thing, but that the town did kick in for the updated radio changes. So I mean, this is, again, it's not without precedent. Again, not the exact, not the exact scheme, but, but the same, and I mean scheme in a good way, but, but there is precedent for the town contributing to radios.
Well, and the system has to be one and the same. We have to be able to speak, we have to be able to hear the fire and police, and you have to be able to hear us. So it's all one system, like, even though it's radios.
Correct.
Are we at the end of this?
It doesn't sound like we are.
No, I didn't want to stop the rhythm, I'm going to change your rhythm, I'm going to change your rhythm to help us.
Break it down, Chris, break it down.
So, so two informational questions, and then maybe one's just conversational question. The, where are you all now with pure, like, what percentage? Margin of error of 50% in answering this question, okay? Where are you in public funding of your budget, you know, these days versus, you know, in the 70s? Is it 50%, 50% now from donations? Is it 10%?
Um...
What is it?
Less than 10.
Less than 10.
So we do an annual undercard, we have a mail, we do...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So Chris, page 42.
That's the deadline increase.
Please, a million, this is the King James verse.
That's about 10%.
And then, from the, so the second question is, who does your reimbursement? Is it, do you have a full-time person internally that does, who claims for insurance?
It's you.
And, you know, I'm thinking about what we did in Town Hall with, you know, we added, you know, we added, we added an asset to certainly go after unclaimed improvements in town, which generated a significant amount of found revenue, if you will. And it's, as a question to the Board, it's not today to answer, you know, do you have the best, do you utilize the best resource to go after those reimbursements, so you're maximizing all the money that you can? Because it's just a conceptual question.
Yeah, we speak to the process.
So, so I'm, actually, the first off, for collections and all, we actually have a very good rate. I think that my numbers last year were 93 or 94% in terms of what was retrievable. Fortunately, due to the cost constraints we have now, we are going to be sending some people to collections. We've never done that in the past. We've tried to refrain from doing that. We're also have been given permission by the state to bill for what this is called, which are calls in which we go to someone's house and basically help them off the floor, assess them, make sure they're okay, but they don't want to go to the hospital. Because that is still a cost to us, whether they go to the hospital or not. So we're trying every avenue to try to get in as much as we can, to be honest.
Okay. I think, I think you got, library, and you got, you go back to the old thermometer. When I was a kid, that was the most impactful thing.
I wanted to do a thermometer. I wanted to do one of those one year.
So just, I mean, the fire department's here, so I'm just going to, this is, this is not for today, but I think it's something that's asked. Essentially, there's a lot of overlap between you and the fire department, in the think of this concept of emergency services. You think of a building, training, dispatch, communication, truck maintenance, qualifications, all that, and, and volunteerism. And I wonder at some point strategically, is there room in the conversation for you to be a part of the organization to solve for your funding challenge? And is the inhibitor there, besides cultural resistance between two departments, which is quite possible, is the inhibitor there because you have moved more, you've added more paid staff? And does that inhibit that potentially from ever occurring?
So, I...
Oh, go ahead, Sean.
So I've had conversations with both, both organizations about this. I think it's on the table, but I think there are substantial challenges to doing it in the short term, because the organizations are actually more different than I think you might, might understand, right? And one is still substantially volunteer-based.
Which is what I alluded to.
Right, I mean, substantially volunteer-based versus paid, again, different staffing models, you know, there are, there are some overlap in what you articulated on the maintenance side, on the vehicle side, but a lot of the purchasing power, a lot, I mean, they have their own facility, so there's not necessarily synergies that we would gain in that space, Chris. So I think it's a longer-term conversation, but at this point, I'm not sure that's going to be the, the short-term fix for us. I think we have to continue to evaluate this from an ongoing operations, an ongoing, you know, Board of Directors, overall management. And by the way, the Board of Directors is doing an outstanding job getting ahead of a challenge here. There's no concern with their current makeup, but simply just lift and loading SVA and making it a subsidiary of the Fire District is, is not a solution that, that will work right now.
I'm not saying it, I'm saying strategically.
It, it could be in the longer term, but again, based on some of the preliminary discussions we've had, it's, it's not as simple as one might think. And there are potential downsides to it as well. We enjoy, while there is a one, there is a one-mill tax right now from the Fire District, add seven, eight, $10 million to the town's budget if we were to enter into a paid fire service, which would be catastrophic from a law right standpoint. And we don't in any way want to invite that conversation to happen, so we need to be very careful about when and how we would enter into that partnership.
Yeah, and that's, the last thing I want to do is have, is to lose the spirit, the effort, the contribution, the volunteerism of the fire department. I'm just thinking about the funding mechanism, because the fire department is a, is a, is a, is a 100% funded organization.
Correct.
And is that a way to assist the ambulance?
It can be, but we are...
Get to its goal, which is delivery of a very similar expectation of service emergent. And also, I think, potentially, convers, again, this is, this is a big mousetrap to unravel, determining if it's accurate or not for two, five, 10 years. But when we think about increase, you know, the chief also often talks about the burden of being first responders to the police department, and then that's a justification for training costs, loss of services there. And is that also then potentially, as you realign people's goals, roles? And is that also then potentially, as you realign people's goals, roles, does that allow for alleviation over there? Just, you've got to think of it all, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, that's all.
So, Chris, there are really three funding models in Connecticut. Number one is what we are, which is completely self-funding, or attempting to self-fund. The second is funding through the, basically the Board of Selectmen, the town. For example, Canton funds a good, last year, I think they spent close to $200,000, maybe a little bit less.
I think that's increased this year, though, right? I think that number's going up this year from what we...
It is. So, there's through the town, and as a matter of fact, Simsbury did that previously up to 1997, where the town paid for paramedic services before the Ambulance Association. But one is self-funded, second is through the town, and the third is through a fire district. You have all three of those models, and I think, as Sean is saying, the idea is step back. There's a lot of complexities to all of those and figure out what makes the most sense going forward.
Because the public, aside LDR, because the conversation never is really in the public. The conversation never takes, it takes place rightfully, understandably so, amongst the spirit and people who are involved with it, but never really helps. So, I just think just to know that it's something that you have considered.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, on the docket for the summer, and we'll get Gary in a second, as long as the chairwoman is good, is, you know, is, again, if we do the 150, and again, we talk about those changes, that we're not going to go home. We are going to have to form a work group and continue to work through that, continue to talk to our partners in the Fire District. Because if nothing else, the advice, you know, obviously a successful organization and what can we learn? And then, you know, is it a midterm solution to have this service funded in-house? Is there a way to have synergies? I mean, does it be, there's a lot of ways we can go. And then longer term, you know, if and when the Fire District does change, if that happens, is that the time to put it together? Or do we continue to leave them as two independent entities? I think that's the continued conversation. To your point, Chris, it needs to be in the light of day in both, at both this board and at the SVA board, so that we're having transparency, we're getting the input that we need to.
Oh, Gary.
And well said, Sean, and thank you. And we have had that conversation and we have identified the need that we do need to, as a collective group with the Board of Selectmen and our emergency management team, with the fire and the ambulance, collectively look at this. And we're here, we're looking at a 12-month stopgap, Band-Aid, if you will.
Yep.
But, hey, we've got to look at it in a much more longer-term solution than that. And we're more, from the Fire District side, we're more than willing to help in that conversation. And I may add is that it's not just Simsbury's problem. The, Simsbury ambulance's success right now depends very, very closely on its mutual aid partners from Canton and from Cranby. So, we need to have a much bigger conversation with all of them so that we can collectively come up with the proper solution. And there's nothing, there's nothing more important. I mean, here we're talking about, you know, portable classrooms and roof leaks and things like that, but this is life safety. And in our mind, anyway, there's nothing more important than that. When someone is in here, they need that assistance and we need to be able to provide that.
Yeah, Gary, I think you said it just right. And to me, I know this isn't the service improvement section, but this is to maintain basic services the community expects at this point, right? I mean, the call volume tells us that we have to have a second ambulance on the road for these times. And quite honestly, that's probably going to increase. That may actually help the funding model if it does increase. Sadly, that means more people are hurt, but the reimbursement opportunities go up. And that is the nature of the business, so.
And this building continues in town. Anthology alone, they were about 10% of the calls we had last year, which is anthology.
Yeah, I mean, that's substantial, 10%.
So, what I'd like to do, since we're here and they're here, is I'm on the bottom of page 16. We have the generators listed, we have the loan forgiveness, and I'm adding the SVA grant for 150. That's somewhere else.
Yeah, it's in your outside.
Agency. So, let's, yeah. Okay, thanks. So, I think, I'd like to maybe take a vote on these items while we're all here. Does that seem reasonable? And then we can kind of move forward and not have you guys hang around. Anybody up for that?
My thought is that I am supportive of all the three of the requests we've heard, but I'd like to, before formalizing it, just look at the context of a larger budget.
Yeah, we've never voted, until this whole stew is cooked, we've never voted on anything.
Okay, fine. I just was thinking they were here as outside agencies. That's fine.
I'll tell you, I mean, this is my top priority from a funding standpoint, so I intend to support all three.
So do I.
I think you've got the, I think you've got the consensus of our board.
Okay, I was just trying to get some off the list.
Your intuition is right.
That's wrong. Okay.
We'll pretend that you voted, okay?
We'll call you if we change our minds. It's on TV, we're four people watching.
Every other November, you get to hold us accountable.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
I guess that was out of order.
No. You're right. Your intent is correct.
I do, too.
We don't know where it's coming from, right?
Yeah, well, that's true. But I was thinking we could figure that where later, but I don't care. I don't care.
Your inclination is right.
Okay. Amy, so are we gonna, so we still have the outside agency, too.
Who else wants money? We're in a money mood.
Yeah, should we do the outside agency request on the top of the page and then do the ARPA stuff?
Sure.
What do you want to do, Tom?
Capital's going to take longer than 40 minutes, so we have no intention of going past four. We shouldn't start capital.
I was going to say, let's get through the outside agency request, the other ARPA. We have the housing and the Main Street that we can talk about on page 16. Just, but nobody's here to talk about any of these?
They generally don't.
They don't? I thought Morgan had come in the past and Sarah.
Sometimes. I mean, when they're worried about us cutting something.
Yeah, I thought people were here before in the past. So, then there's not much, this is just kind of internal dialogue on these items, right? The Chamber's asking for an increase of $7,500. I don't need to read all these to anybody. The Simsbury Community Media is asking for an additional, yeah, so some people are asking for additional funding, and I guess we'll have to decide.
Yeah, sorry. So, you have some, your requested increases, some are on a per capita increase, which we went over on Thursday night. So, those ones were built in. These ones are the additional asked, including two new requests from the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center in $9,000 and the volunteer ambulance, which you just heard from $150,000.
So, Tom, anything that's a per capita the town manager put in as, in the budget as fully funded, I assume?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I'm going out of order and this isn't helpful, let me know. But with the Interval House ask, I'm supportive of the 5,000. I thought that the level of detail they provided on the services they offer our residents and some of the data they provided was very helpful and thoughtful. And they provide a critical service to some of our residents, so I'd be supportive of that full ask.
I agree. Amy, didn't, if you, it's possible to look back now for today, but I thought we funded them at 5,000 a couple of years ago, and then they asked us for a lower number last year for some reason.
No, that was the...
I thought Interval House, we went up a couple of years ago on, because the woman, and then we, for some reason, we came back down. I think they asked us for less.
We went back to what we gave them the year before. I don't think it was five, though. I think it was in the 25, 3 range, because Chris asked to have it higher, and we stuck with that. So...
I mean, their mission is extremely important.
A couple of things, I was going to say, you know, because some are asking for additional funding, but some of these agencies, we gave them the extra $10,000 with the grant funding that we did for ARPA, and some we didn't. So, that may factor into how I'm thinking about funding some of these, because they did get an extra 10 last year. Like, Simsbury Community Media, we gave 10,000, extra two. We did not, Interval House did not ask for money. Main Street? Main Street, we gave them 10, so I wouldn't look for an increase there. Chamber, I'd like to, my feeling is I'd like to incorporate the Chamber ask with the ask about the tourism map, because they're asking for tourism map funding and also increase to their, you know, the services that they provide. So, I'm not sure if there's a way to merge the two of those things, if we do either of them.
All right. I've behaved until this point on the tourism map, but why can't you hit map on your phone? Like, why are we paying $60,000 for a map?
We haven't talked.
I really don't understand that.
Well, we didn't talk about those yet, but I...
Is it the map, like the one you get the pizza plates, it's got the big caricatures all over it and nothing's...
Don't companies fund that? Like, isn't that like a...
Yeah, so that, well, that's in the capital conversation, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we want to go to CNR items. We could go to those CNR items now.
Let's not do that one now.
I think we all feel the same on that, then.
It's, yeah, it's like I can see all the places to eat on my phone for free right now. Like, I'm very confused by that.
So, I don't, as far as the outside agencies, are we ready to make decisions? Do we want to...
Can I just share some thoughts on the Main Street partnership ask?
Sure.
I don't feel like the detail that they provided in their submission reflects the work that they do. I thought, you know, Interval House, which was asking for $5,000, provided a really nice level of detail. And the level of detail that Main Street provided was just basically they need the money to fund their operations. So, my thought with Main Street, because we've been talking about, as long as I've been on this board, about doing an MOU.
Yeah.
Is that we do fund them at $50,000, but we withhold on giving them the money until this board agrees to an MOU with their board. And I think that that could happen in the next, you know, several months before the next fiscal year, so it wouldn't have an impact on them. But I'd really like to see that so that our residents and their board is aligned with what, with what services they're providing.
It's funny, I had the same in the description in the business program that we had talked about. That's in the lower part of this, our base. First of all...
Small business grant.
Yeah, so first of all, we had changed it to 250 in the Finance Subcommittee. We reduced it to 250, and that was, Sarah at the time was accepting of that. So, I'm not prepared to fund 525 here. And then some of the things that I included, if we were to fund that was, I would want the MOU to kind of go in line with that, because we had presented the program. We've talked about this program since Sean was on the ARPA work group. And we had made the decision in Finance Subcommittee in December that we wanted to move it forward. And then it kind of got, we got sidetracked because we were discussing, waiting on Main Street on the fee schedule and agreeing to the activities that they would provide and not the town in order to implement the program. And we have not completed that conversation. So, that's something that I think, considering I would be willing to move forward as kind of a placeholder for an assignment if it comes to fruition in the next couple of months, maybe with the MOU, and the, you know, and the $50,000 that we might, we could have the capability to move forward on that small business grant if that all flushes out, which it hasn't at this time. So, I just want to, that's what I'm thinking regarding Main Street. I agree with the 50K in the MOU, because we've asked for it, it hasn't happened. And also in line with the small business grant.
Yeah, so just to add to that, I would be in agreement with that as well. You know, we have, we do have MOU with Main Street Partnership as one of our small number of policy goals. So, I think to incorporate that's a great thing. And with the 250, just for our other board members, I don't know if you had an update with the, if we've updated them on what the program looks like, but it's a mix of a facade improvement program in addition to kind of a local business grant program with some caps of 10,000. But I think, you know, with a facade program, that enhances, you know, the look of our town and our businesses. And, you know, I know a lot of our businesses are having a difficult time right now. So, I'm in support of that project.
And it was up to, the max was 10K per business. They could only apply for one of the tracks in the program. And that thing that is outstanding is making sure that the administration of the program, if we pay a fee for the program, would be on Main Street and not on town staff, because that was the piece that we were waiting to gel here before we approved it.
So, just, so a couple of clarifiers. So, page 76 breaks down the funding request. It's got funding request round one, 250 with an admin fee of 12.5 to Simsbury Main Street Partnership, and then funding round two.
That's old.
Well, so, I guess, and that backs into my other question. So, is what was submitted, what you all have agreed to in concept or been vetting at the ARPA subgroup?
No, because this equals 525, so this is not...
So, assume it's 250. Forget the 500. Assume it's 250. Is the documentation what you all have been discussing at ARPA?
I believe so.
So, that's the small...
Where did we land on the administration fee? Because we questioned...
We didn't. So, we didn't because that was, it was pushed back to Main Street to confirm they were going to provide all of the services that was requested before we settled on the fee, because that was still kind of negotiable.
So, that's outstanding. So, let's pretend that page 76 doesn't exist and it's outstanding. Is page 62 to 75 consistent with what you guys have talked about?
I think it's pretty current because it says November 21st.
Well, so that, this is submitted by Main Street, and because there's two policies in here, right? There's the small business grant program, which is on 62 to 69, and then there's the retail restaurant and services grant, which I think is different?
So, it used to be two programs.
Okay.
And we said one program, one pool of money to go either track, right? And the way it was documented was not totally consolidated. Let me just say...
So, there's two ways to get at the 250?
Yes.
Okay.
You can't double dip.
If you're a business, you can only approach, you can only ask for funding from one of them.
Yeah, just to make sure some, everybody gets a caught of something.
But the intent is to make this as broad as possible to hit all the businesses, is what I assume Main Street was going for?
Yes.
Okay. So, all right. So, because that would need to come out of the Subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Yep.
Okay.
We wanted to bring it, we tried to bring it out of Subcommittee for approval, and it never got pushed forward because we got stuck on the administrative tasks. Now, it's part of the budget ask. So, I don't think it needs to come back to the Finance Subcommittee other than clarifying the fee schedule, because we're asking now as part of the budget. Approval for this project is part of the budget so that we can assign the money here. And then potentially Finance Subcommittee would clarify, we're getting what we need related to the commitment of Main Street. But I think the ask here is, do we want to move that program forward rather than do it at a Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yeah, so I guess, because essentially by approving the money, we're approving the program, right?
Yeah, I guess so.
Is there a way we can approve the money without approving the mechanics of how it gets spent yet?
So, well, sure, but then we have to do it, right? So, in order of operations, I would rather approve the program or have the discussion on Monday at the next Board of Selectmen meeting about this program. Because if we don't agree with the program, there's no point in having the discussion about the money.
You're responsible to approve the money without...
And I'm not suggesting I would...
I guess the program's here.
All I'm saying is, I haven't, I haven't read through the program, nor do I have the summary of it. Again, I'm trusting you guys, which is fine. And if you're telling me that this is good, then we can do that. But I guess I would rather have a 10-minute on it at the Board of Selectmen for you guys to hit the high points. And we either get comfortable with the program or we don't. And if we all do, then we talk about the funding, which...
I would say, it being, having seen the presentation, gone the back and forth, I do feel comfortable with it, but I also think it's prudent for all of our board to actually have that 10-minute discussion and really understand kind of the nitty-gritty behind it, because there is a lot there. And I think for all of us, because the last time we met on it, we were comfortable with it, but we haven't had the admin piece back of how that part works. And I think that that's also important for us to get.
Yeah, it is. It's important for Amy to have that and Maria.
So, I know there's a lot going on, but is it possible to add this program to the next Board of Selectment meeting? And then, obviously, it's the weekend already, so I don't know if we're going to be able to solidify the admin piece. But by the time we vote on this, we need to have that admin fee agreed to, because that's going to be part of the budgetary request. And then we also need an agreement in principle to finish the MOU, because even, it has to be, I think the MOU has to be in place for this program as well, right? And for the 50 is what I heard being added tonight or this afternoon. And for the 50 is what I heard being added tonight or this afternoon.
That's the consensus of the board. I mean, that's.
I mean, again, given this level, given this level of administration funding, there has to be some sort of contractual obligation spelled out in place. We can't, I, I mean.
I mean, it's been, and it had been reviewed by the town attorney. I mean, this, in December, it was reviewed by the attorney. He looked at the thing. Amy and Melissa were part of the meeting. Um, we were good to go with the program. It was voted to move forward. Then it kind of got sidetracked. We got a list of items, um, that Maria had asked to make sure that Main Street would commit to doing. At one point, we thought some of it was going to be done internally, um, but now it was going to be done specifically by Main Street, and that is outstanding.
And just to be clear, I mean, I'm reading through this really quickly, but it says, you know, Simsbury Main Street Partnership will authorize reimbursement. Does that mean we're giving them the 250? And they are issuing the payments?
I'll let Amy speak.
Okay.
It was coming back, though. There was a mechanism for us to come back and regale.
I've lost track. What are we talking, what are we talking? Are we talking about just asking for Main Street to come in here and just give us?
I don't know. We, we need somebody. I don't know if it's Main Street. I don't know if it's.
I agree with you. It is, I mean, it is different because, you know, in the sense that, not that it's, not that this is not a valuable group and they provide a valuable service. But if we're spending, if we, if we deferred, if we, if we, the Flower Bridge, right? If we, if we take ARPA money and, and rehab the ARPA, the Flower Bridge, which in other instances would come from taxpayer dollars to fund it, you know, we would have to increase, we'd have to source it from our taxpayers. I would think those taxpayers want a clear understanding of the fact that you're taking ARPA funds and diverting those to a very concentrated group of users and benefactors. Of course, everybody can absolutely, we can have the conversation that our, the livelihood and the success of our businesses is what creates adds to this community, just like the Flower Bridge does. But it's an, I think it's rather, is important not to say that you guys haven't done the vetting, but again, approving the, approving the, approving the dollars and then having them explain to me how they're going to give the money out, that's irresponsible. So.
Well, I kind of thought someone, they would be here to explain the program, um, and we could go through it, but.
I, one thing I'd like to add to that, I, I was not at the last, uh, ARPA subcommittee meeting to know exactly where some of this ended up. I did see our town attorney's letter regarding, um, we had raised questions about providing Main Street, uh, funding and at what level, if they were managing this program, would it trigger, open meeting requirements or four-year requirements, things like that. And, um, i- i- I think it was the opinion of our town attorney that if all of the, work that Main Street was going to be doing was primarily administrative in nature and they're not actually making decisions in the grant program, then, um, perhaps it would not trigger that. So I would want to make sure that we have the tasks very clearly delineated because I think that if Main Street is making decisions on who's getting money, then that might change that analysis or that trigger. Because I think that the assumption of the town attorney right now is that the work they are doing is just, is more managing the program, accepting the applications, keeping us informed and that we are the decision makers in that. And, and so I think we need to have those roles finalized for that issue as well.
We weren't making the decision on the expenses.
So we.
So anyway.
We clearly need clarification on the process. We need to know if there needs to be a contractor or MOU in place because we need to protect Main Street and the taxpayers' dollars to make sure that these funds are spent in accordance with what we're going to authorize. So can we just get that on the agenda for the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
Sure.
Save our friends the agony of listening to us right now.
Okay, um, I, there.
I do like the faces everybody's making though.
No one here from Housing Authority? Is that something, um, do we have any data that we want to present?
I, I, as a liaison to the Housing Authority, I have some information I'd be happy to share if, um, regarding, um, this request, you know, last year, um, the Housing Authority received $100,000 of ARPA funds for some much-needed, um, infrastructure improvements. The Housing Authority is kind of like Simsbury's affordable housing, uh, option for people that have, uh, limited income, seniors, uh, and people with disabilities. They have been, um, spending, um, the $100,000 that we gave them last year. I have a detailed update on what work has been done. It had to do with electrical panels and heat pumps. Um, and a lot of that work requires people to be outside of their units, so as those units turn over, they are able to do that work. So that's why all of that money has not been totally spent yet. Um, the Housing Authority still has about $640,000 of infrastructure needs. They, um, that has, um, you know, they, they have come back and asked for another $100,000 this year to help offset that $640,000, which has to do with, um, site lighting work, um, tub, uh, to, to walk-in shower conversions because the people living there are, um, seniors and disabled. So those tub conversions will help reduce fall risk. And then also trying to do, um, window replacements to be more energy efficient, um, to help cut down on utility costs. I know the Housing Authority is working hard to, um, continue to explore grant options, um, and, and exploring, um, potential state grant options. And I've been in touch with our state rep, um, to make sure that we are getting information about what opportunities may be there. They are also looking at opportunities to try to increase donations and perhaps create an auxiliary nonprofit similar to Friends of the Library so that they could, um, help raise the profile of, of the Housing Authority and the services that they offer and, and be able to accept donations. I would say, you know, affordable housing has been a topic of conversation in our community. It's certainly a topic we're hearing about all the time. And, you know, this is, um, an existing affordable housing, um, uh, option that we have here that provides about 100, um, units, between the apartments and the congregate living at Virginia Connolly. Um, so, um, you know, investing in this aging infrastructure that they have there, um, I, I think supports our Board of Selectmen goals, um, to support affordable housing here in Simsbury.
Well, I, I would support this request, Amber.
Yeah. If we go back to, ARPA was an outgrowth of COVID, right? To a certain extent, in the concept, and it was, one of that was to, the tenants of ARPA was health. And for people who were disproportionately affected by COVID as well. So this, I think, the folks that are received, the clients that have received the services of Simsbury Housing Authority fall right into those. If those two tenants still exist, which I hope they do, else then, then to me, it's kind of a no-brainer.
I'm in support of it and I appreciate, Amber, that you are, um, communicating with our state rep as much as possible because it, it is, there has to be resources at the state level, which, um, so I'm glad that we are taking that initiative and doing that as well.
We were communicating about it at eight o'clock this morning. So.
Might you suggest how they administer the small cities grant program so that the consultant doesn't get 20% of the grant? That might be a, a way to fix that as well.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the Housing Authority's problem, right? But that's somebody to just write the grant application and get it on the agenda.
The lack of staffing at the state level at the Housing Authority, you know, is, is challenging. It makes it very challenging to, to deal with these issues.
VNA asked us for an increase and is, they know it in there. They haven't asked for an increase in 15 years.
Have they?
VNA, Visiting Nurses Association.
Aren't they an automatic? Aren't they one of the automatic?
Are they automatic? I thought, no, they're not. No. Uh, but again, to Chris's, Chris's, um, passionate argument a moment ago, I mean, they're directly impacted by COVID. Those folks are working substantially hard. A critical member of our public safety team, Nancy and her team, um, support, you know, this community in, in ways that folks I don't think realize. Vaccination services, obviously, strong connection with social services and, um, $4,000 doesn't seem to be outsized for an increase over, you know, a 15-year period, given what, you know, 12,000 folks. And again, we're, we're not, you know, we're going to, we're not going to stand out amongst other communities in terms of being outsized contribution either. I think Avon was just under 40, Farmington's at 44. Um, so, you know, again, you know, we're right, we're around the lower end right now and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, 4,000 is A, going to break our bank or B, is, is is an outsized ask. So I would ask us to consider that piece.
Okay. And they did get 10K from us in the nonprofit program.
That's a good point. You're right.
So did.
Yeah, it's a good point.
So did SCM. Interval House did not apply.
Nope.
Chamber did not apply.
Not allowed to apply.
They weren't allowed to apply.
Right.
But, um, so we don't vote on these yet either, I guess, what you're saying. We don't.
Would it be helpful to go through just each of these really quickly and make sure there's consensus on what we want to do with these?
Well, oh, consensus, but not voting. Sure. Well, as, as far as a chamber of commerce, like I said, um, I want to discuss that in any capacity with the tourism map. I'm not in favor of the tourism map, but I might be in favor of a prototype of some sort. Um, and if it contributed to the money that they're getting, you know, to, to give them a little extra per year, um, and that work was included in that outside agency funding, I might be willing to fund some of it. The other question I have on the chamber is, I would like to know what Granby's contributing because now we're a Granby-Simsbury chamber and our money's going, it's not, is it specifically to Simsbury or is it shared across Granby and is Granby covering their side of the, the work? I don't have that information in front of me. That's my question on funding for the chamber. I don't know what everybody else sees. So that isn't up to me outstanding. The River Shed, that's a flat thing, right? No increase. That's the same. Okay? The Transit, I think that's another one we just go with.
That's up per RADA.
Um, Interval House, um, after seeing the breakfast we went to at the Interval House and the needs that were presented to us, I, and not giving them any extra money, I would consider giving them, um, some extra money. I, the, the thing that I hate the most is that that's where we're going to start again next year. I would like to be able to do these as one-offs and, and go back, you know, not just consider that level is the next year ask. But, you know, that, that's, I'd be happy to give it to them this year, given all that happened, but I would prefer to go back next year and start fresh rather than start at $5,000.
I think that they, you know, they've done a nice job in providing how many residents they're serving of ours. So we get, I mean, if that number continues to increase, you know.
Okay.
If it doesn't.
The other, the, those, the SCM is a tough one. Um, we gave them 10K for ARPA. They've done so much, their presentation and the attached. We want to look at that. I, I'm not solidified on my feelings there, but I'd love to hear what other people have to say.
I mean, right now, honestly, the only group that I'm really, um, on board with an increase for is Interval House. Except for the ones that are per capita. Um, but that's just me.
The ones you're on board.
On board.
Well, so we have, we have consensus on Interval House. Is that a?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm fine with Interval House. Yep.
Same here.
I mean, generally speaking, I agree with what you just said, Eric. I mean, again, we did, as, as Wendy reminded me, we did give VNA 10.
Oh, yeah.
So I still think 4,000 over 15 years is not an outsized increase.
I agree with that.
Yeah. So are you saying you'd go with the 40 and not give them another four because we gave them 10? And we look at them next year?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the right message. I think, yeah.
As far as seeing what that 10 has an, as far as what that 10 does for impact.
Yeah, hold tight with the 10 and we'll please submit the 44 again next year or whatever the number is and we'll consider it.
Okay.
Assuming we're here.
Do we use that logic then for SCM because we gave them 10?
I would, plus we built a bunch of studio stuff for them with a capital stamp.
Right. I mean, the only thing about SCM is, I mean, this is equipment that is, I think specifically directed more towards lib-, the public meetings that are happening at the library and making sure that our public meetings are being properly captured and broadcast. And we have all seen that that is the new expectation, that hybrid meetings and that on, you know, that all these meetings are going to be available to stream. And it also is an accessibility issue because some people cannot attend a meeting in person, but this allows them to have them accessible. So because it's not located, it's not related, I don't think, to the studio upgrades and things like that, it has to do more with accessibility around our public meetings. I, I would like to know if there is some grant money available for that. I know the library has gone after Pig Pisha grants, so I'm not sure if that is something that's available to SCM. I don't know if Lisa has any thoughts.
I know that SCM has applied for, I think, 50, 40, 50, 50.
Yeah, yeah.
I need to create a line for one.
Okay.
For the studio.
Okay.
Do we want to bump it up on the top bit?
Hold on, I'm reading through this again.
I know. Well, we already approved the, oh, we didn't approve. We have consensus on the ambulance.
I mean, here's my frustration, is we spent the money on, on that studio and had this request come in at the same time, I think we would have spent the money on this versus the studio.
Right.
That's what I get frustrated, that's why I always ask about what's coming. Because then I get backed into a corner and then I got to fund both.
Yeah.
And that's not prioritization. Right? So if it's known, it, it frustrates me when these things come in out of order. I'm not suggesting SCM did that, but again, had I known this, I, I would have done this first, the studio second. Maybe both would have survived, but as the budget stands today, I don't think that's true. So, and again, we're, so we're buying, let's be clear, we're buying new cameras for their studio. They're then downsizing those cameras to these other facilities. That's what DeGrant says. We'd like to spend the additional funding on new camera equipment for the newly renovated studio. This would allow SCM to donate two of our studio optic cameras.
Right, right.
To relocate these to the library. So again, the ultimate beneficiary is the library, but we're buying brand-new cameras for the.
Studio.
The studio.
Does the library need the cameras?
I don't need the cameras.
They're trying to upgrade.
From the cameras that we have.
Okay.
I mean, having tried to have, sit through some hybrid meetings in that terracotta room, it has been challenging. And I think an upgrade in equipment would make having hybrid meetings in there more accessible.
Don't disagree, but there are three people online right now watching this meeting. One of them's the clerk, right?
Right.
The other one was the chief and, oh, hi, John. And it was, I mean, I, I went on YouTube, there was, there was four people watching, right? So. I mean, I, I don't disagree, but, you know, $15,000 for four people to watch a meeting, which they can then see on the website, which it doesn't matter which camera it was.
But it does, I, I will agree with Amber. It does provide a lot of accessibility to people. Um, I've heard from some residents that they're extremely thrilled to be able to watch a meeting. And well, I guess I'm more talking about dialing in with the, the Zoom, so I guess that's really not the topic, but, so.
I'm not going to get in the way of this one if it's the consensus of the board, but my preference would be to not.
That was my initial preference, is to just leave it flat-funded. But I would.
It seems like, you know, we have, it's, it's an interesting conversation, interesting. Uh, you know, each year we somewhat, yeah, you've got the VNA, not VNA, excuse me. The, uh, the ambulance, fantastic org-, you know, fantastic organization, but the ambulance and, um, Simsbury Community Media. You know, every year, it's sort of, we have a same conversation and it's, it's, it's about assisting with their operating costs versus others who were, who were, who were asking to, um, to potentially add services or add whichever, meet, meet the expectations of some other clients or improving those experiences. And, uh, both of those organizations, you know, Simsbury received money from us this year, as you're pointing out. And at some point, it's going to continue, when you, just like the AMBIS, when you continue to have a conversation around meeting operating costs, helping us beat our budget operating costs, it's then, at some point, it transitions into viability, right? Just like the ambulance.
I, I, I am not, um, I, I am okay with leaving them flat-funded. I just wanted to point out that it was what, what the request was for. I just wanted to point out that it was, what, what the request was for.
So we have the new one on here from the, from the Performing Arts Center.
That's a, that's a third organization.
That's a new organization, as a what?
That's the third one that usually is part of that same conversation.
We did give them 10K, I think during.
We did.
Yeah, so this one is, this one is to reimburse them for their free concerts, but, I mean, there wasn't any backup in there of what's the actual cost.
I, I am okay since they already received funding through the grant program.
And the $300 for the bathrooms, too, right?
Yeah, and it seems like, I mean, I, I think with the PAC, this is just a general statement. The last three, 36, you know, I don't know, 18, 24, 36 months, conversations have occurred around a lot of ideas and needs there. And then seemingly, when things don't come together, then a new conversation comes, occurs because they reorganize their thoughts. Oh, amazing organization, would have found, you know, one of the most important pillars of our cultural experience here in town and attracting people. But seemingly, I, you know, we almost have to get onto a strong foundation of exactly their operating mechanism to continue to dialogue with them about their needs with us as a talent. Because it's kind of always shows shifting.
Right, I think what they're struggling with right now operationally is that they have not had a bounce back in attendance post-COVID. And I think that they thought this last year, they would see a significant bounce back and they did not. And so this year, I think, is going to be really telling because if it, if it stays where it's at, it could be a new reality of what operations are like right now, as opposed to what it was pre-COVID.
Okay, so we were, I think we're through those, right?
I'm just looking at this.
Couple of things.
I'm sorry, I just want to put a fine point on it. With the Main Street, is there consensus that we're going to do 50,000 and wait until an MOU is in place before releasing the money?
I think we want to, we, if that works, I can ask Amy, because that's something we've been asking for, for at least seven months. I know Maria, we've talked to Sarah about it, and we've also talked to Maria about looking at ones that are out there. I'm not sure where we're going to get the, where it's going to originate from, which side, but it is something that we all have been talking and want. So I think that's fair to make that, to expedite that. I would say that. So we didn't talk about the, what's the, do we, do you want to go home? Like, it's 4 o'clock, do you want to finish the ARPA ask? Could we talk about the health insurance reserve or should we save that?
Let's save that, that's a part of a bigger conversation.
Okay, bigger conversation, I guess everybody wants.
These are all part of capital, Wendy, I honestly, I mean, and I think we need to.
Health insurance is capital?
Well, because if we use it here, we're not going to use it for capital.
Okay.
That's, that's my point.
Because that, I.
That's what I mean by it.
Yeah, and then some of the, even the things we talked about here, if there was another option to save taxpayer dollars, I might go that way. So, and then the DEI money, where do we talk about that? Because that's, that's back here in the service improvement and we haven't talked about that. So that we could knock off too, couldn't we?
Yeah, let's talk about that. So that came in as an outside agency grant.
You know what page?
No, it's, do you know where that is, Tom?
It's in the amendments.
27.
Yeah, it's in the amendments.
Because that would be a good thing.
There it is, this is page 277.
Thank you, this page numbers are good.
So Nicole probably put together probably the most robust, I mean, by the way, she has backup for every single item on here, including tablecloths, napkins, everything for these events. And I encouraged her not to give us that spreadsheet for all of these ideas. But at the meeting Eric and I were part about, they have some pretty ambitious goals for the Juneteenth celebrations in the, in the future. I think that's, Eric, would you agree, that's probably their biggest need for more prioritization? I think the current ask is 2,000, which I think is why Maria has 2,000 as the recommended. But they have visions of making that a substantially larger event. To their credit, they have solicited and received contributions from neighboring communities to make that a partnership. I don't know, I know that they have, they have a grant for the, from the Hartford Foundation, right? For the housing study? Eric, is that right?
Sorry, Sean?
They got a grant from the Hartford Foundation for the housing.
For the housing work.
For the housing work, so they are utilizing grants where they can. I encouraged them to put all of this in, warning them or advising them that we likely were not going to fund all of it because it was an extremely challenging year. But fully, fully committed, this was their schedule. I think they are struggling like all boards and commissions and organizations with volunteerism. So I'm not sure they would even be able to put all of these on, quite honestly.
The Juneteenth, they're asking us for 13,000 towards Juneteenth, is that correct? Or is that their budget for it, but, but they have other contributions?
I thought that was their total budget and they only wanted a subset of that from us, Eric.
So the Juneteenth money that we've been talking about, that's $2,000, is for this Juneteenth, which is not part of this budget.
So this ask is 13,000 for us for Juneteenth?
Which my understanding is that would be Juneteenth of '24.
But that's the whole event and that includes other communities funding it as well. So I don't believe that is our requested contribution. I think the 2,000 is it, so I'm not sure that's the right number, I guess.
Well, Maria's just proposing 2,000.
Yeah.
And I, I know that, well, you guys are monitoring, but that, Cheryl, they were going to ask all, all towns that were going to participate.
And they've gotten those, they've gotten those monies, yes.
They actually went to the boards of selectmen in some of our neighboring towns.
Yeah, they've gotten a number of communities to say yes already.
Okay. Yeah, the amount is kind of tricky, but I.
So let me make this easy, I support the 2,000 for Juneteenth for this, at this standpoint. Basically what we're funding this year, so take that 13 and just put 2,000. And I can get clarity from them if I'm wrong there, but I believe that's what they're asking us for. I would support their materials budget of 4,000. And then I'd give them another, another 2 to 4,000 for events for the year is overall. So basically what I'm asking is 10,000 to fund a couple of events plus their signature event, Juneteenth.
That's reasonable. I mean, they are, and all, the work that they're doing in collaboration with, you know, social services, I mean, they are one of our, if not our most active committee right now.
They are.
With really an ambitious agenda that, that is, I hope they can do it all, but they, they might not, so I also understand.
They're trying. Impatient for the folks.
And it's based on, on the ability of volunteers to do the work.
Sean, the, just the, the Juneteenth cost, 13, as you said, that's being spread across.
I believe that's all in for the event and that multiple communities are contributing to it.
And so ours would be essentially offset too, is that what the?
So what I'm asking for is two right now, and I'll get clarification.
How far that goes.
Again, I'm not in support of 13 for that, I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
I am in support of consistently flat funding it, which is what we've done for two years.
And the materials cost is just overall operating materials cost, right?
Correct, it's getting their messaging out.
It's not specific to any one event or any series or whichever.
So I just want to get this straight.
Yep.
Are we just asking to fund $2,000?
I'm asking for 10.
Okay.
And I'd be on board with 10.
This is a breakdown of what the 10 would go to. I would leave it to them to, to fund their events. With the expectation that obviously Juneteenth continued to happen as that is their signature event.
So I, that, I was good, I was okay with the 2,000, I wasn't thinking 10 because they have the HP. I know their grants are for different things, but they've received grants for their data project and grants from the Hartford Public Foundation for Giving, which are still in progress. So I'm, I'm personally not ready to give them more money until we see results of those projects. And the other, so that's, that's my position, right or wrong. The other thing that I question is, and I don't know how to do this, if we're going to start funding projects of different committees like Aging and Disability or other, is there somewhere that we just have a Simsbury Town Project Fund and that any of these commissions that want to put on a, a party or something, compete for these funds? So that if they don't, if we, say we give DEI 2K and they only use 1,000, that leaves $1,000 for the next group to use. I don't know if that's possible book-wise, but that, you know, maybe in the future, that would be how I would like to see it because we're giving all this money to one commission and we're saying that they're the, they are deserving of this commission. I don't know what other boards or commissions need, if anything, so that's where I'm coming in.
I mean, so your point is fair, I think, but like, you know, you know, like the Housing Authority, right? Obviously, we're talking about capital for, for those folks. So the individual commission doesn't necessarily have a request, but they're advocating for capital for, you know, for Housing Authority. You know, we've given money to recycling in the past, we've given money, you know, we give money to the Veterans Parade, obviously. You know, there are places we do this, which I think the intent of the community block grant section was supposed to be that. But your point is right, is do we, do we just put 15 grand into town committees and let, you know, the, the town manager in the future distribute those funds? I mean, that, that's a solution as well, I'm not sure we can get that done, right?
No, I didn't mean, but.
If they're town events, I mean, why would it, why would Juneteenth be, be different than Simsbury Celebrates?
Yes, I agree.
Which is in Parks and Rec, you know? I mean, like, would, would Parks and Rec be a home for some of this? And it, and it runs through there, as opposed to being a special ask of a particular commission?
And that, I was thinking that when Parks and Rec was asking for the three grand, why wouldn't it all come from one bucket? And if it's not used, it would stay in that bucket rather than be aligned to that project.
I also have, so with the DEI with 10, four taken out, four materials, that leaves six for events. But when you look at Simsbury Celebrates and, and what we fund, so we're funding 5,000 for an event where we get pretty much the entire town at and then 6,000 for events that you're not getting necessarily that sort of.
Yeah.
It's what I question a little bit.
No, it's, and you're, you're absolutely right. The challenge with the DEI events is you're basically paying for the speakers and the, the purpose of the event to come in is really where that cost is. You know, getting the author or the individual for the particular topic, I believe, is where the cost of those are. So, I mean, you're absolutely right, on a, on an impact standpoint, far smaller reach, but.
Is there any opportunity for DEI to potentially become like a nonprofit similar to a PTO? They have speakers come in that they fundraise and that's how they pay for their speakers?
Yeah, I mean, we could spin them off. I mean, I think they're still going to be asking us for a contribution every year.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's okay, I'm just curious.
Sean, do you have a, to that point, do you have a handle? As I, I specifically remember that, yeah, sort of cautionary tale, whatever, that when we, when we chartered, what was the organization's originally?
Spirit Council.
Spirit Council, great. And we've just, it's a full, it's a full support of this organization, but I remember when we chartered it and seeded it, I was, I said, well, we now, we now have committed to a new ongoing funding liability. Correct? And that was just really relative to anything that we do. And I remember that year, there were probably three or four groups that we said no to who did provide, do provide incredibly meaningful services. You know, by and large, I think that they were, they were suited to a smaller, very important but smaller cohort. So we kind of felt that it was, those were a little too distilled versus this, which was something that's a broader, more community-based. So what am I saying? What I'm saying is that I remember when we seeded them, cautioned, I think we gave them, that was when we gave 20, 25,000 for the data, data project.
Yep.
And then, so what is specifically, can they give us potentially what is going to be their annual operating ask?
This is exactly that.
This is our attempt to get it.
But outside of a special, I mean, outside of an event, what is their baseline? So this will be their baseline?
This, this is, that was.
We can work with this and just accept this every single year, program for it, budget for it.
If, if they were able to throw every event they, they wanted to on the calendar and, and get speakers, et cetera, around it, this is exactly what that is, Chris. And what I'm, what I'm cutting between is I'm not sure they're going to be able to staff this whole schedule. And that, again, was where my 10 came from, is.
So I just couldn't, I always wondered, is there a point where we, you know, not looking at them as like an outside age? It's to Bundy's idea, do we start budgeting for some fixed inclusive expectation of them versus it being sort of up and down, you know, based upon some projections about events or whatever? Is there a hard number baseline that they're going to need to operate every year that we should just fund?
So what we've done, so the answer is yes, and what we've done is two, Chris. So essentially what they're asking is to go up from two because we've been, we've been able to, to transfer funds to them for Juneteenth.
So two to four?
So we funded one event, yeah. So again, I think they'll take anything, but obviously they have a robust set of programming, they want to bring in different folks. I mean, you know, I think, as I articulated with you guys, they're hitting an underserved, underrepresented portion of our population. The tapes that they recorded from the Cheese Day ceremony session was incredibly impactful in terms of the residents they reached out to. And again, while you're right, it's not touching the volume of residents at Simsbury Celebrates, I think it's hitting a different set of residents that we haven't necessarily connected with.
The cohort is that we all believed in the mission.
So, yeah.
Getting closer to the point where we're no longer considering them an outside agency type of request each time to a fixed line item cost.
So it, to speed the conversation, I mean, perhaps we go at four or five, because I think we can, we can probably absorb that. You know, that's up from two, and we would start to fund their programs and then maybe continue to get them in on a quarterly or mid-year basis to Wendy, to your point on where's the product, where's the, where's the data, where, everything else? Because I know they're working hard on that. And then we continue to talk about their base operating needs and then any special initiatives from there.
Yeah, I, I'm still, I'm going to keep going back to this. I still would like to see, they, we've given, Tom, we've supported their data project needs over the last two years. It took a long time to get that kicked off. I personally would like to see the results of that project before I start giving them a lot more money. I would give them money for Juneteenth, but that's just, that's me, so it doesn't matter, it's one person.
I, I hear your point, I guess they're not asking, these, this is more of the base operations versus that was a special project. If they were coming to me with another special project, I think I would shoot that down until they finished the other ones.
But my point is, I'd like to see how they do with that, that project before I put more money into the management of these.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Do we want to do consensus on that now? I, I would just, my consent, I would stick with the 2,000, but you guys can propose something if you want to.
I'm asking to go to four.
I would get a four.
Okay.
You're going to what, do you want to weigh in as consensus?
I'm not going to say anything, imagine that. No, yeah, I, I, I'm not here to question, I mean, we're, we're cracking walnut shells here on two to four, I mean, it's.
Oh, three to the four.
Okay. Okay. I think we could, is this a good place to stop? Amy, Tom, everybody? We have a long night on Monday.
I think it's worth it to say, even though we sped through the ARPA, we're going to, there's a whole, we're going to have a more complete narrative on all of those. So please don't take how we went through that as the level of depth of which we are going to have the conversation.
We have to do the building blocks piece of.
Yeah, we just don't want.
So is, is this now being added to Monday or do we?
It is on Monday, the, it's.
There's time block on Monday for.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, because I saw Wednesday also as potential placeholder.
We're going to need Wednesday.
Okay.
We only knew that once.
We're going to need Wednesday.
Last year we didn't. Okay, well, I'm going to take our time.
Is there anything anybody needs for Monday or Wednesday, so we can get these guys a head start on it?
A few things we asked from Amy and Tom, I would love, we could get some of that, like the contract, the board of that mechanic, all that kind of stuff. If you have time.
I have a couple of questions, yeah. Yeah, I know it's Saturday. I have a couple of questions for Amy.
Oh, yes.
Is there a target spend out of CRF annually or target balance?
So we haven't, I mean, there's probably, no, they're definitely in value in seeing what that number should be.
Okay.
How we go about it, I'm not entirely sure, but I can tell you what if you knew now is not sufficient. I don't know what the number is, but to maintain all of our council needs, I feel like it should be higher until we have like a base level where we're not bonding for any more renewing expenditures.
Okay, so the less we use out of capital reserves, the better, is what you're saying, right? Okay, I won't say that then. And then the other thing I was asking about is if we could have the figure of how much, like, let's say, the bridge, I'm sorry, we're broken record, I'm sure that's what you're thinking, $2 million or even per $1 million, how much does each $1 million reduction in bonding impact the future debt service, which impacts operating, which would reduce the mill rate? Which I know we would talk about anyway, but if we have an amount like each thousand is $100,000 a year.
Yeah, I mean, it is, but remember, it, it only impacts the mill rate if you don't do anything. If you just shove something. If you just shove something else in its spot, it didn't impact the mill rate.
No, I'm saying, take something, use cash to bond, and not bond for it, don't add something else. It's going to take away across that bottom line of debt service and save operating costs and impact the bottom line for taxes.
It does. So that's where the target of, we're going up to almost eight.
Yeah, we don't want to.
How do we get back to seven, or six, or five, or wherever we're going, right? So that means we're going to reduce our spend, which the problem is, is a direct conflict with what Amy just said, is we're not necessarily spending enough on our capital needs to support ongoing. And we've had conversations with our friends on the Board of Ed. They have similar challenges. So we have to continue to have that overall, what's the right number of both short-term and long-term capital spend? Because we all want to get back to seven, and we're going to have to get there. But if we need to spend two mil aboard, so that's another 4 million in capital, that's not what we're spending right now for all the other midterm, short-term stuff. So I agree with the premise, Wendy, but we've got to have that bigger conversation of how do we maintain all of these assets and buy all these elevators and do all these things we need to do?
Yeah.
And is it realistic to get there within the parameters of what we've set out? I'm not sure it is unless we're going to continue to, like, Tom's, we're at 85% for the roads, 85 or 83 or whatever we're for the roads. If we take Chris's suggestion, and it's not wrong, and go out to 20 years, well, the roads drop to 76. And are we okay with that as a service level? That's the strategic conversation we've got to have.
I'm going to offer the Board of Finance Chair something to say, since she's sat here all day. Did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. So first of all, I thought that was a great discussion today. I thought you guys were focused on, it was very informative. I felt your analysis was terrific. A couple of things to think about. You know, our board, I think, went through, I think Art said it best, every one of these requests is excellent, but the bottom line is too much. Taxes are very, very high. Next year, they're going to be even higher. So one thing I guess I would, you know, ask you to think about, and Amy has, you know, gave us an estimate of about a million. If you reduce bonding, you get about 135,000 in savings. It depends on the interest rate. So there are different ones strategically to do that. But if you bonded, and I'm just throwing a number out, 4 million, you've got 3.7 in ARPA, right? So if you bond 4 million there, using some capital reserve, that's 540,000 a year savings in your operating budget. There are some needs in your operating budget in the out years. But to Wendy's point, that means you can't add something else to it. So that's one thing to think about. And then think about what do you have left. To Amy's point, how much do you want to spend in capital reserves? So you think you've got 1.9 in capital reserves and 3.7 million total, so that's a 5.6 bucket? And so you could do things above the line. What I just heard, a bunch of things that sound like priorities for you guys, I'm going to put out there. The fraud audit has to be number one, because our auditor said that. But that's one. But I heard about the needs of some of the fire and ambulance, so those are above the line. And then I heard other things that might be below the line we want to do, but I'm not sure we have capacity. So pick your number. Amy and I, you know, we haven't talked about how little, but we are projecting about 600,000 in savings in your operating budget at year-end close. That could be contributed. We are projecting about a million in revenue, partly apart from conservative tax collection assumption rate. We'll probably have to sign some of that for health. But that's another million that will go back later to fund capital reserves. So if you think about how much you want to bond to reduce your operating budget, raise capacity in the out years. We know there are some out year needs for both Tom and the chief. They're going to need a funding mechanism. And then go, all right, what are my top priorities? And then the last thing is, well, how much am I going to reduce the capital reserve fund? I wouldn't go below 700,000. If I were you, Amy may come back and say, no, don't go below a million this year. Whatever your number is, and then rank them, and fill, fund as many as you can. And consider the one-time service requests along with the CNR and the capital, and just list them. You know, the CNR PD is its own separate side. Wouldn't include those, because there's a separate funding source for those. But the plain CNRs, you can do it that way. Our board did express an opinion that we'd like you to come in with reductions to what the town manager budget. We ask the same on the Board of Ed, to the extent you can. I know, having listened to this, there are so many wonderful and important needs.
But that statement's very general. I mean, is there a specific, I mean, there has to.
We did, we, that's fair. We gave out a number to the Board of Ed to target 750,000 reserves. We didn't make it mandatory, because we know, I don't know that they can make that. We didn't do that to you because we didn't have the benefit of hearing from you first, and we didn't want to give you a number before you'd have a chance to review. But we talked about, just in terms of capacity, in the 300,000 range. I don't know if you can do it. One way you could do it is by bonding and reducing your debt service costs. You know, review capitals. We're looking at comprehensive view and what it does to the mill rate. Debt service does mill rate. Now, if you do it in the out years, it will reduce the mill rate in the out years. I don't, our whole board hasn't discussed it. But for me, I'm looking at the out years, thinking we need some mill rate relief there. That would satisfy me. I mean, any way you look at it, there are tough numbers. So I would just ask you to, and then the other thing Amy has, and Maria did a nice job listing. Next year, there are about 2.5 million in unfunding capital reserve requests. So anything you fund this year means you're not going to be able to, so just look at the two years, I would just say. If something looks like a priority this year, would it still be your priority if you looked at next year? So I'm just trying to think about how to create at least some capacity for the two departments here that expressed. I think they were the only two expressed personnel needs.
No.
Parks and Rec, too.
Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec, then. Sorry, I forgot about that. But there were needs that I was hearing. And how do you do that? Will you have to reduce somewhere else? One choice to reduce is CNR. A lot of towns are using the ARPA to reduce bonding costs. Now, the disadvantage of that is if interest rates go up, and if you paid off a lower rate, does that the long-term play? I don't know. We don't know where those are going to go. But for your consideration. And I don't have a solid answer on that. And Amy can check with our bond council, and you guys can decide how much of that CNR stuff is critical and can't be used for bonding, how much you want to bond. But that's sort of my two cents, recognizing that you guys have a very tough decision, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I, you have hard choices to make, and residents, I think, with people, some people will be significantly worried this year and next year.
Okay, thank you. Anything from Tom or Amy? Oh, and anything from Heather?
Sorry, it's me again. We, the email that we received of answers to questions we had prior to this, there was one request for the slide of the six-year, the 8% debt with the different colors in it. And we were told we would receive that today. I was just wondering if you have that for us?
It's like in our PowerPoint. It's in the PowerPoint.
We can email it out.
Yeah, it's definitely in the book.
I would still appreciate that. I'm just going to look at it.
It's the most fun, all slides, and it's never in the book. You guys kind of like.
Make sure we print all the colors next year for you guys, yes.
It's not in the budget. We can't do it.
I asked.
We print black and white.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you so much. You know, I asked if we could get the levy count spreadsheet, which is the whole budget in an Excel file? Because then you can kind of play with it yourself, if anybody likes to play in Excel and see the impact. And I know that that was going to be an ask, you know, resource, is that possible? Is that something we could?
Yeah, I just need time to adapt the.
Is there stuff in there we're not supposed to see? Okay.
Well, not that you're not supposed to, but there's stuff that I prefer not to.
Yeah, I think it doesn't, some of it doesn't help us get.
It, I understand what you're asking for, but it's not necessarily productive on a one-on-one basis. I think we need to do it with the finance director to see, because again, if you're trying to hit a mill rate, then just hit a mill rate. If you're trying to fund projects, then prioritize projects. But doing those scenarios, I found, is not effective for decision-making, at least in my opinion. Because then you just create all these scenarios, and you're no better off than where you were at the beginning. So you've got to pick a, do I want to hit a 31 for a mill rate, and I only tolerate a 2% tax increase? Or do I want to fund my top 10? And again, personally, it's, again, candidly, it's the finance director's job to run the mill rate calculation.
Okay, it just, I was going to say, it did help look at the next year to see what we did this year, how it impacted next year. If it's a resource issue, then I will just defer and do it on the fly on Monday night. That's all. Okay, so can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.